Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carmen. Happy birthday.
Thanks, Glenn.
You need to council member Henderson?
Good evening, Councilmember Francis. What's happening? Councilmember Cascanian. Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney.
Hello, sir.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Hi there. Hi, everyone.
Wait a minute. How come it's not on?
All right. Are we ready to get started?
I believe so.
Becky, are you ready for us?
Yes, we are ready to get started.
Okay. So we are ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Sirda.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, let me just read this quick disclaimer here. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has issued, I'm sorry, has signed AB 361. Please be advised that council chambers are close to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is you can view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email the deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting and write "Public Comments" in the subject line. The third way to participate during the meeting is via the Zoom webinar. The telephone number is Erica 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID number is 82321390222. Press the number 9 to raise your hand and the number 6 to unmute when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the Raise Your Hand feature during the item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you'll be allowed to speak during oral communications. And during public hearings, you'll be allowed to speak when I open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council will be given three minutes to speak. So we'd like to just thank you in advance now for your cooperation. So with that, um, let's see, on our agenda, we did not have closed session tonight. So we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And my understanding, we're joined by Michelle Valencia. Is she on already? Give her just a second here. Hi, Michelle. Hi there.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Once you lead us in that, if you can stay on until after the invocation, and we're going to bring you back up again. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. You can go ahead and begin now.
Okay, um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Stay on for a couple of minutes. Tonight, we'll have our invocation led by Mayor Protem Rodney Tanaka, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, um, and we just thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us every day. And Father, we just thank you that you are with us tonight as we go through a transition. We pray that you will be with us and continue to guide us and make sure that all that we do is for our city, for our community, and for our citizens to make sure that our city continues to move forward in a progressive manner. Father, we thank you for Councilman Cascanian's five years of dedicated service to our city. And we pray for him as he moves on for his future. Father, we also pray for those that are still suffering in the Ukraine. We pray for Japan and Prime Minister Abe's homicide. We just, we pray that our world will just somehow just come together and find peace someplace, Father. And so as we move forward, we thank you. We are so blessed to have you. And so for your son and his sake, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So let's bring Michelle back for a second here. So today, we have one of our newest team members from the Recreation and Human Services team. Michelle, who's a Recreation Leader 1, just graduated from Lenox Academy and is now enrolled at California State University of Long Beach, where she'll be a Political Science major. Michelle works at our parks and in our summer date camp program. In her spare time, she enjoys baking and running. So Michelle, thank you so much for leading us today in the Pledge of Allegiance. And everybody, let's give her a virtual round of applause. Great job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, as always, thank you for leading us in tonight's invocation with a most appropriate prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so next, let's move on to item number 5A. So I just want to warn our viewers tonight that it's, uh, tonight's going to be a little different because we have a lot of moving parts going on. It may look like we're doing pauses tonight, but it's because we're going to be swearing in people. And so one minute you'll see us on camera, next minute you'll see a couple of us in the dais, and cameras may go off. But we are live the entire time tonight, so please do not tune, uh, tune off. So we'll say to be going. So 5A is the Election Official Certification of Official Canvas of Municipal Election Votes. And I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk, Ms. Nina Semenza.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and Member of the City Council, Gardena City Council. Agenda title is Election Official Certification of Official Canvas of Municipal Election Votes. The Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk has canvassed and certified the returns of the city's general municipal election held on June 7, 2022. Set forth and attached to Resolution Number 6593 are the total numbers of votes cast for each candidate at each precinct, all of which is contained within Exhibit A. And the certificate of canvas of the election returns are presented herewith for your approval and adoption. The city's June 7, 2022, general election included an overall voter turnout of 25.07%. And so our council action required is that staff recommend that council adopts Resolution Number 6593.
Okay, thank you. At this time, does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Madam City Clerk, do we have, uh-oh, uh-oh, hold on one sec. What did I just do? Just click off. What happened?
You muted.
My apology. My fingers were moving too quickly there. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Well, at this time then, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6593?
Let's go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Mayor Protem Tanaka. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis. I'm sorry, Councilmember Cascanian.
Yes.
And Mayor Sirda.
Yes. Okay. So next, we're going to move to item number 5B. Bear with us for a couple of minutes. We're going to do a little bit of a shuffle. Some of our council members will be turning off their cameras. And we will head over, Councilmember Cascanian and myself, will head over to the city council chambers. And, um, again, we're still live, so you may see a, um, a screen that looks like we stepped away, but stay tuned. Okay? All right. So everybody, if you can turn your cameras off at this time.
Okay, we are back here to continue with item number 5B. We're now in the dais. Please bear with them. As I mentioned earlier, we're doing a little bit of a shuffle between our offices and back here live in the city council chambers. So at this time, item number 5B is a resolution of commendation to the honorable Art Cascanian, an acknowledgement and recognition of his distinguished service to the city and community of Gardena as a Gardena City Council member. So I have a resolution. I have a few things here I'm going to do. First, it's going to be a resolution. Then we're going to have a video. I will say a couple of words. Councilmember Cascanian will be able to say a couple of words, and then we will have photos. So our resolution reads as follows. Resolution of commendation. We, the mayor and council members of the city of Gardena, California, do hereby declare and resolve as following. Whereas Mr. Harut Art Cascanian is known and recognized as a prominent elected official, civic leader, and dedicated citizen of this community. And the closure of this faith of his municipal service is respectfully acknowledged by the officials, employees, and citizens of Gardena. And whereas Mr. Cascanian has served the city of Gardena with much devotion in the position of city council member, beginning in March of 2017, and as Mayor Protem for one year, ending in April of 2020, resulting in a total of five years of significant city leadership. And whereas during his time in service, Art Cascanian has, along with his council colleagues, consistently fought to provide and protect city services, has shown support of the city's plans for the future, and is to be committed for his work with the members of the city council and city staff to maintain the city's economic stability. And whereas throughout his years with the city, in addition to his municipal service as a member of Gardena City Council, Art Cascanian served with distinction on the city's Planning and Environmental Quality Commission as chairman before joining Gardena City Council, was a delegate of the Gardena Finance Committee, and further, during his five years of service, represented the city as the alternate delegate of the Southern California Association of Government, the League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division, South Bay Cities Council of Governments, and the County of Los Angeles City Selection Committee. And whereas Mr. Art Cascanian has served his community as a successful local businessman and has been a Gardena resident for many years, and further, his loyalty and dedication to the citizens of this community is evidenced by his longtime involvement with the local and charitable organizations. And whereas Mr. Art Cascanian, record of service, as well as his personal and professional interests in the growth and progress of this community and its inhabitants are deserving of public recognition. So now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Gardena, California, that official commendations, gathered with sincere appreciation, are hereby extended to Art Cascanian. On behalf of the officials, employees, and citizens of the city, all of whom join in wishing him good health, much happiness, and success in his future endeavors. And this has been officially signed by all of the city council members at this time. Congratulations. You can give them a round of applause now. We have a brief video here that we would like to show as well. It's a little bit of a surprise for Councilmember Cascanian. So when you're ready. Okay, all right. So I know your colleagues probably want to say something to you, but because we're doing this weird shuffle back and forth, I'm going to ask our city council colleagues if they could hold their remarks until their closing remarks this evening only because technically it was too hard to kind of shuffle back and forth. But I would just like to say, well, I have a mic, that you have done an amazing job in the past five years, not only as a great city council member, but as a friend as well. We've had many, many conversations. I know personally of all the work that you've done in this community, your time that you've given, the money that you have done as far as donating to our seniors, buying pallets of water and tissue things that many people don't even know. And so I commend you. I don't know many people who would go over and beyond like that. So you're definitely a class act, and it's been my honor to be able to work with somebody who's a stigmatized issue. So thank you again for your time on this council.
Feeling is mutual.
And then we're going to turn over here. Move over here. Go this way. Okay. You want to say anything? You have a mic right there. You can turn it around this way.
This way.
Face this way. Cameras in. This way and that way.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a pleasure working with all of you guys, especially these five years that I was in the city involved. It was a great, one of my great five years that I've done anything into the city. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues, Madam Mayor, Rodney Tanaka, Mayor Protem, Mark Anderson, council member, Paul Ed Francis. And I want to bring up Dan Medina too as well, because I worked with him as well, too. We all did a great job. We all worked hard. And my goal was to move forward. When five years ago, I was campaigning, I promised that we're going to move forward and we're going to strive. And I think we did achieve our goal. Where we were and where we are right now. As far as finance-wise, the city is in great shape. Thank you to everybody that helped us to be in this position. Me, the mayor, or any other council member couldn't do this by themselves. We all worked together, and that's where we are right now. And I just want to wish everybody, and I have a request, Madam Mayor, that whatever we established past five years, and our goal was to strive and move city of Gardena forward, please let's continue that route. And, uh, thank you very much. I just want to thank to my supporters as well, GPOA, Congresswoman Maxine Waters, and more associated SLB member, and Fire Department Local 1014 LA County. Everybody that has supported me, my colleagues, my friends. I couldn't do nothing without you guys, you know? I'm a person. I'm one person. And one person can't do nothing by himself. We all can work together and move it up. So thank you for your support, everybody. And I wish the upcoming council member good luck. And hopefully, they move forward as we move forward. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so for those who are in here viewing for Art Cascanian due to COVID, if you're here for Art, and Art only, we ask if you can exit the council chambers. If you're here for some of the other members, you will be able to come back in. Next, we're having Ingrid Sukiyama. If you're here for her, you can stay in. But we just want to make sure that we have enough room legally, the way we're supposed to do it with COVID here. So for those of you who are watching on Channel 22 or on YouTube, just bear with us a few minutes while we get it, bring everybody in. Okay. So next, we have a resolution of commendation to the honorable Ingrid Sukiyama, an acknowledgement and recognition of distinguished service to the city and in acknowledgement and recognition of distinguished service to the city and community of Gardena as a Gardena City Treasurer and further to bestow upon her the title of City Treasurer Emeritus. So the resolution I have reads as follows. Resolution of commendation. We, the mayor and council members of the city of Gardena, California, do hereby declare and dissolve this following. Whereas Jay Ingrid Sukiyama has served City of Gardena for the past 17 years in the position of City Treasurer with great distinction and the closure of this phase of her municipal service is respectfully acknowledged by the officials, employees, and citizenry of Gardena. Whereas Ms. Sukiyama was first elected to the City Treasurer's office in March of 2005 and has previously served the city of Gardena for 11 years as Deputy City Treasurer. And whereas Ms. Sukiyama, as the general financial advisor to the city and the citizens, independent financial manager, managerial observer, also worked closely with the mayor and the city council to help ensure the financial health of Gardena and its citizens. And whereas along with her responsibilities to the citizens of Gardena, Ms. Sukiyama also served as the city's finance committee, call the finance committee. She served as a treasurer for various organizations throughout the years, such as No Grab Gardena, Cable Uses Corporation, South Bay Classic Foundation, and the City of Gardena Sister City Association. She also held professional membership with the Municipal Treasurers Association, South Bay Board of Realtors, and the California Municipal Treasurers Association. And whereas Gardena has been Ms. Sukiyama's home for the past 30 years and has demonstrated her commitment to the community by giving generously of her time and has proven to be an honorable elected official, demonstrating an unquestionable work of ethic and a clear commitment to the city. And whereas in conclusion, we are pleased to bestow the title of City Treasurer Emeritus upon Ms. Jay Ingrid Sukiyama effective July 2022 in recognition of her outstanding years of service to the citizens of Gardena, California. Now therefore, being dissolved by the City Council of the City of Gardena, California, the official commendation and recognition together with expressions of personal appreciation and gratitude are hereby extended to Jay Ingrid Sukiyama on behalf of the officials, employees, and citizens of the city for her outstanding service to the community and its inhabitants, all of whom join in wishing her good health and much happiness in all her future endeavors. And this too has been signed by the entire city council. So thank you again for your time and your service.
You're so welcome.
Let's just stand right here for the camera. We have a camera right here. Just want to get the phone, whatever you're comfortable with. Okay, and then just over outside. And then bring your phone and step over here a little bit. And you can come closer if you like. All right, is that it?
That's it. Congratulations.
Thank you. So do I hold please or? You can take a hug if you want. Thank you again. Okay, thank you. Okay, just in case anybody was wondering, the city treasurer chose not to say a few words. She was happy accepting it and very happy to carry out the resolution. So if everybody could bear with us just for a couple of minutes, again, we have to do our little shuffle here because we're moving on to the next portion of our city council meeting here. I want to remind all of those in the city council members, if you're in the office, please make sure your cameras are still on. Make sure your cameras are muted. And we'll be moving to the next part here. For Sergeant Arms, I believe we'll be bringing in people for the next part for the swearing in. The next part is our oath of office for the newly elected as well as those being reelected. So if everybody could just give us a couple of moments. Okay, for those of you who are watching on channel 22 or Zoom, we are back on. Again, we are all still live, which is still doing the shuffle back and forth. So at this time, we're going to be, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be doing an item number 5D, which is the oath of office for the newly elected as well as the reelected. So the first person up is myself. I will be getting sworn in here. I will be sworn in tonight by our city clerk, Ms. Nina Simenta, who will be coming to the front here and will be joining us running in. So come on up.
It's been a great pleasure to witness through the oath of office. Charmian, Tasha Sirda. Ladies, raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Tasha Sirda.
I, Tasha Sirda.
Do solemnly affirm that.
Do solemnly affirm that.
I will support.
I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I would just like to first thank all of you guys for coming out today and thank all of you for supporting me throughout this current election. As you know, this was such a tough election that we had. But nevertheless, I appreciate all of the support that many of you have given me, my family, Anthony, the P O A, and all just the friends and family of the fire department. You guys were just amazing and just being there with me, not only during this election, but even our previous elections. And I just want to let all of you know that I'm committed to continuing doing this job as well as I can, if not better than I've done previously, and to continue making the city move forward and grow. So once again, thank you guys all for being here today. It means so much. Each and every one of you that are here, each one of you that I called and you guys said you would come out last minute, I totally appreciate that. So thank you guys again. Friends, family, Paul Tanaka, I appreciate you being here with us as well. Stuart, all of you guys, you guys are such amazing people and wonderful people in my life. So thank you guys again. You can take pictures really, really quickly. Once again, I want to thank all of you guys for coming to be here with me today as I celebrate another four years of my swearing in. So thank you again and I apologize again because we're doing COVID and we're doing this shuffle that we have to ask if everybody can please exit the room. Unless you're here for Rodney Tanaka.
Tasha, they can all stay.
They can all stay. There you go. That's what I'm talking about. All right, as we swear in. They want to. As we swear in, Rodney J. Tanaka. So Councilman Tanaka, will you please come forward?
Okay, so I brought my better hat with me.
Stand by your name. Okay, which side should you stand on? Rodney, sit down. The execution of the so is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the United States of California. I, Rodney Tanaka.
I, Rodney Tanaka.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
I want you to all stay because I love you all. We worked hard this time. And if it wasn't for all of you, I wouldn't be here. We worked hard this time. If it wasn't for all of you, I wouldn't be here. So, I appreciate the support, the love, all the hard work. Mom walking the streets with us, it was a team effort. And I have to thank my Gina because she supported me all the way. When I wasn't doing what I thought I was supposed to be doing, she would kick me in the rear. But, you know, the P O A, county fire, the citizens, everybody that supported me, I love you, I appreciate you. I'm going to give you the best four years that I can give you, better than what I gave you the first four or five. But I'm going to, I'm going to do all the things that I promised to do because you all know that I don't make promises I can't keep. So, I'm going to do my best for you. And I just, I just thank you that you had enough confidence to vote me back in for the second term.
Yeah.
So, I love you all.
Rodney, before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
There, want to do a group picture? Did you have anybody else who wants to do a group picture with you?
Not unless everybody wants to get up at that.
Might want to.
I got the most important picture.
Okay, so, once again, we're going to have to go off camera for a second, but we're going to have to do our shuffle one more time here. For those of you who want to stay forward swearing in, newly elected Councilor Wanda Love, you can stay. If not, we have to ask if you can please step out and then for people who come in at that time, okay? Okay, so we are ready to go with our next swearing. It is our city clerk, Ms. Mina Smith, so please come forward tonight.
The execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. I, Mina Semenza.
I, Mina Semenza.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will. That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to thank the community for all their support over the last nine years. It's hard to believe it's been that long, two terms, and we got an extra year. And I'm so excited and grateful and thankful and humbled and blessed to be able to continue as your city clerk. And we just keep on doing our thing and doing great things in the office of the city clerk and bringing our city forward. And I just want to say thank you so much. I want to thank my family for being here. It's late for you guys. They work.
And friends.
And friends. Oh, yes, my friend, Dovulet. She's my fellow Realtor. Thank you for coming. Thank you, everybody.
You guys want to take a picture?
She wants us.
Yeah.
Okay, so next we have our new city treasurer, Guy H. Law. Can you please come forward? He too is going to be sworn in by our city clerk.
The execution. The execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Your right hand, thank you. I, Guy Monto.
I, Guy Monto.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can take your phone, that's fine.
You all right?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, okay.
And so nice smile, sir. Great, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
We'll catch you. Of Gardena, coming out my first round here in Gardena. I have some big shoes to fill coming in behind Minzukiyama. And I promise to work very diligently and very hard for all citizens of Gardena to make sure that all of the assets, the funds, everything are well protected. Thank you very much to the voters of Gardena. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for bearing with us as we've been kind of doing this shuffle in and out here. That was our last swearing in, but we do still have a meeting to continue with. Tonight, we've already sworn in myself, council member Rodney Tanaka, council member Wanda Love, city clerk, Mina Semenza, and new city treasurer, Guy Monto. So at this time, we're going to move on to item number 5E, which is boards and commissions update. What I'd like to do is to ask my council colleagues if you could turn your cameras back on, because now we're going to be going totally zoom again. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Robinson if you can take over, starting with item number 5E, while I make my way back to my desk. Okay? Thank you guys again for your patience as we've been doing our shuffle, our swearing in, our recognition to those who served on our city house board and our city treasurer here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And congratulations to all the reelected and newly elected officials. We have a lot of work to do, so congratulations on your appointments. We're going to move on to item 5E, Boards and Commissions Update, and I believe it's our Recreation Commission Report. Thank you, I think we have Mr. Woods Wooline tonight.
Yes, I'm Woods Wooline. I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. We're going to show you a short video, and after we show you a short video, I will say a few comments in, so that your night might be short.
Thank you, Woods.
Madam Mayor and Council, you just saw a video of many of the activities we had during the course. This has been a very difficult time, the last three years because of COVID-19. But through the last few months, we were able to provide many activities that will, that started with youth all the way up to seniors and also family activities in where they, we saw many of talented people who performed for us and activities that draw us closer together. We're grateful for these activities, and we were partnered by many organizations that helped us to provide these type of activities, and we're grateful for them. Also, I want to express my appreciation to the members of my commission, of the Recreation Commission, Commissioner Johnson, Dyson, Matthews, and House. They have been a great support, and their input has been greatly appreciated, and they've, I feel that we truly have a strong commission. Also, I want to recognize the staff, the recreation under the direction of Stephanie Santan. She and her staff, this has been very difficult, and they've done really a marvelous job, and we appreciate it. And each of you, I invite you tomorrow for the opportunity to come to this facility, Nakoka City, and to recognize her staff, the Gardena Recreation Department staff, and to show your appreciation, call activity calls, Rise Up, because we're celebrating Recreation Month. And you will be able to have some food. It's from 1:30 to 3:30. Also, I will ask one other thing. I realize that each of you are very busy. I realize that very much. But we have youth sports that are going on, and at the end of each season, when allowed to do so, we have what we call awards presentation. It is a great opportunity that at least one member of the council could come and be part of the awards presentation. This way, you'll get to know a little bit about the youth. You'll get to meet their parents and, and just socialize with them, knowing that you care, because I know you care very much. And so I invite you to do that if it's all possible. I want to thank you for this opportunity. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If I don't have the answer, I will get you the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooline. Our mayor is back, and I'll let her take over from here. Thank you very much for that report.
Mayor Protem, have we read the proclamation already?
No, that was, I didn't have a proclamation for the recreation.
I'm sorry, that's.
We have it here.
My mistake, my mistake, I'm sorry.
But also.
It's here.
Woods made a request.
I have it here.
Yeah.
I've read several of them throughout my years, 37 of them to be.
Okay.
But if you let us know about the award ceremonies in advance, I myself, I don't know about the rest, but I myself will try to make every effort to get to some of those.
We will, we will give you plenty of notice.
Thank you.
Yes, I also, when I was Recreation Park Commissioner, that was one of the highlights of my being on the commission was the awards banquet. I really enjoyed it, so please just let us know, we'll be there.
We will, it's important for the youth, just to see you. And I know you care, all of you do.
Absolutely, we'll be there.
Sounds good.
Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, just for clarification, I'm sorry, you referenced the proclamation, or you still want me to read the proclamation?
No, we haven't even talked about the proclamation.
Okay, let me just go ahead and read this here. I know you've done it before, but let's, let's go ahead. It's our viewers at home to watch. Proclamation here. Whereas the month of July has been delegated, I'm sorry, designated as Parks and Recreation Month in California and throughout the United States, and this special month has been celebrated for the past 37 years. And whereas our nation is fortunate to have a wonderful variety of parks that provide countless recreation opportunities for our citizens and for the visitors from around the world. And whereas parks, open space, playgrounds, and community and cultural centers make communities attractive and desirable places to live, work, play, and visit, and contribute to their economic vitality. And whereas parks, recreation, uh, activities. And whereas parks, recreation, activities, and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of society, and further create lifelines and opportunities for continuous life experiences for older members of the community as well. And whereas it is fitting that the dedicated work of Parks and Recreation professionals and volunteers of all six of Gardena's beautiful parks, as well as the Nakoka Community Center and Rush Jam, be recognized for their positive contributions to individuals, families, groups, and the entire community, bringing fun, good health, and enhanced quality of life. So at this time, I proclaim July 2022 to be Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Gardena with the 2022 theme, and urge all citizens to participate in and support the many recreational and leisure activities that are offered by the City of Gardena and enjoy all the parks and recreational facilities throughout our community.
Madam Mayor, on behalf of the Department of Recreation, I accept this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Serta, excuse me, I think we took that out of line. We were doing the Boards and Commissions Update, 5E.
Oh.
And then, so this is what Woody was doing, and now we will be going on to 5F, the Certificate of Recognition for the Gardena Explorer.
I am so sorry. That's what happens when you walk over the camera.
Yeah, it's fine. There's a lot going on.
My apology. Hey, but you just ran with it, so thank you. Okay, gotcha. There we go. So with that, thank you again for all your work on the Recreation Commission. We're going to move on to item number 5F, which is the Certificate of Recognition to the Members of the City of Gardena Explorers Post 142 for the success in the 2022 Central Valley Explorer Competition held in Tracy, California. Now, while I'm reading the Certificate of Recognition, I believe Chief Sefel will be coming on here. The Certificate of Recognition is being presented to the City of Gardena Police Explorers Post 142, and it's an official acknowledgement of their outstanding and exceptional achievements at the 2022 Central Valley Explorer Competition, June 24th through June 26th, 2022, in Tracy, California. These commendable accomplishments are deserving of public praise and recognition. Please accept the city's sincere congratulations presented on this 12th day of July 2022. You guys probably will have the official recognition here. Chief, I believe there's a few words you'd like to say.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. It's my extreme pleasure and honor to talk about our police explorer post. As you know, COVID really did a number on our posts over the last two years. We went from 25 explorers down to three. And over the last eight months, our Explorer Sergeant, Octavio Soldana, who is now on your screen, as well as our Detective Nash, who is our Explorer Advisor, have basically rebuilt our explorer program. And we are extremely honored that they have done that. And as well, you probably know, our explorer program is the best in the South Bay and has been for many years, and getting back to this level is a great accomplishment. Now, most recently, on June 24th, 25th, and 26th, our explorer program competed in the 2022 Central Valley Explorer Competition up in Tracy, and that was against 27 other explorer posts, and that's other police departments from throughout California. They came from different states, Washington, Oregon. And our explorers placed in eight of 15 events. Now, that's very significant, because we have a very new, a very young explorer post right now. And to compete and to win in these very difficult events was very significant. So let me just detail some of those. So in the traffic stop event, they came in third place. The critical incident event, they came in second place. And our officer down rescue event, they came in second place. In our hostage rescue, they came in third. In the felony traffic stop, they came in third. Crisis negotiations, they came in third. Domestic dispute, second. In a drill, second. It was an extremely impressive weekend for a very young explorer post. And I want to thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, for providing the resources to continue this program for our children in Gardena, who comprise this explorer post. So I'd like to just ask Detective Nash to come on and just say a few words and introduce who he has there with him.
Of course, good evening. Thank you for having us, Mayor, City Council, Chief, thank you. Detective Tyler Nash, a member of our Special Enforcement Unit. I'm also our Lead Explorer Advisor alongside Explorer Sergeant Haley Barra. She's been with our post for about almost four years now. And Explorer Corporal German Mendez, he's also been with us for about four years. But not to read right what the chief said, but we were a very new post, very young. To do the things that we did over, you know, the course of the weekend in Tracy, could not be happier with our post and, you know, where we've come from, from being 25 down to three. We're back up to seven, rebuilding. Could not be happier with the results that we had, placing in eight of the 15 events. You know, more than I could have ever dreamed for. I mentioned all of our explorers who are probably in attendance right now. Explorer Denise Tenoco, Explorer Miguel Fernandez, Explorer Nathan Peña, Explorer Anthony Castro, and Explorer Alberto Dumas. Without the support of the chief, we wouldn't be here. So thank you, Chief. Thank you for everything you do for us, and we'll keep up the hard work.
Thank you, Detective Nash. And then lastly, I'd like to, our lynchpin who takes, holds everything together for our program and really fights for the resources, is our Sergeant Octavio Soldana, who's also on the call. If you'd like to say a couple of words about the post.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you to the City Council, the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Chief of Police, for supporting this great explorer post. It's a great program. It helps our youth in our city, not only going to career law enforcement, but also teaches them life skills they could take with them to be successful in life. So without the support of the local city government and the Police Foundation and the chief, we would not be here, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you for honoring us today. We really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you guys for all that you do, and congratulations to the advisors as well as to the explorers. Yeah, I've always been such a big fan of our explorers. I think you guys are just so awesome. I've seen you guys at different events, and you guys always just do a great job in representing the City of Gardena. And as you mentioned earlier, some of these things here, crisis negotiation, critical incident, these are things that no matter what you may go into in life, you may end up needing, especially in today's day and time. So congratulations to you guys all for doing an amazing job, and once again, making us proud here in the City of Gardena. So let's give them a round of applause. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's, let's see. Since I jumped the gun and already went to proclamations, we've already done our Parks and Rec... Recreation Month proclamation here. So let's move on to appointments. Does any member of the council, well, just look, we have any appointments, so at this time, let's skip that part. Let's move on to our consent calendar. Sure, everybody's got the opportunity to take a look at it. Do we have any members of the council at this time wishing to discuss any items separately?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. 8F and... 8F and 8G.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to address any items separately here?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, at this time, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items number 8F and 8G?
So move.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember... Henderson? I'm sorry. Councilmember Love? Councilmember Love?
Let me just...
Yes. And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, so let's go back to item number 8F, your question.
All right, as I understand, this is for the elderly nutrition program contract, and this is a amendment 10, and I've looked at the numbers. It looks like we're being awarded $949,000 for the elderly meal program. Does, is this an increase over what we had before, or about the same?
Councilmember Francis, yeah, this is an increase from before. We have our baseline, and then we have ARPA funding, so the total, the total amount is 940.
Okay, 940. Will this allow for an increased number of seniors that may want to participate in program, but for whatever reason, because of funding, we weren't able to add any numbers? Because, you know, during COVID, we've had...
It's just dealing with an increased cost on inflation and other factors. ARPA, they are using the ARPA funds for that increase. I don't, I don't exactly know if we have any, any seniors that were churning away. I don't, I don't believe so. I think the demand's there, but we also have the supplies.
Okay.
And we've already, we've also added new seniors as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right then, so, and this is for the entire year, not just for, all right. So it's $949,000 for the entire year, and hopefully they'll take care of everything. We'll be okay.
Yeah.
Eric, thank you.
Item number 8G.
Same, same thing with 8G. Now with 8G, I guess the baseline is $128,000 for support services, including case management. I thought I saw like meal service, housekeeping, that sort of thing. Is this an increase, or is it about the same amount? This is for new home support services?
This is an increase, and we've added new clients as well.
And we have added new clients?
Yes, it's a $9,000, it's about $9,000 in the increase.
Okay.
And we added new clients.
Now, it looked to me that this, that there might be some additional money coming down the pipe later in the year, because I recall from last year, we were always making amendment and getting increasing funding. Will there be any more funding, or just for the entire year?
This is, we don't know yet. This is just based on what the county's allocation is. Obviously, you know, they have more allocation, and you know, we come back to you and let you know that, yeah, we've increased it again, so our capacity would increase. It just depends whether the county will do that.
By these programs, can we go out and request additional funding if we can support a need for it, or kind of have to wait and see?
We just wait and see if they, if they provide us. I'm not sure if we actively solicit more funding because of the, you'd have to, you'd have to justify that with new clients. So we, the idea is to get more funding and then get new clients.
Okay, then, all righty. And this doesn't include an outreach effort? This is just to take care of what we have now?
Correct.
Okay. Is there an outreach effort to make sure our seniors are...
I'm not sure if there is an outreach right now. I'm sure, you know, we get the word out. I don't know to the extent as to what we do. You know, a lot of seniors don't have outlets to social media. So, you know, we advertise locally, but as far as social media is concerned, I'm not sure if that's very effective if we do that.
No, not, not for, for some seniors, for some.
Yeah, we do, we do the old-fashioned way. We have flyers, printed flyers, so they know about it. We reach out to them, so they know. Yeah, I mean, we talk about it in events. So, I mean, it's well, it's well advertised. I mean, and it's a longstanding program, not only in Gardena, but on the surrounding cities, so you pretty much know about it.
All right then, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question. Manager, what was the increase amount? Did you say 9,000 or 90,000?
9,000 for, for the support services program.
And you said we had new clients?
Correct. So once we get new, new funding, we are able to add new clients.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve items number 8F and 8G of the consent calendar?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Francis and a second by Councilmember Love. You call the roll. Are you muted still?
Well, I've been pressing down the spacebar all along, and now it doesn't want to work. That's odd. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes, okay. Next up is Planning an Environmental Quality Commission Action Sheet. Just for a notice, the July 5th, 2022 meeting was canceled. So we're going to move on to oral communications. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, oh, excuse me, Madam Mayor, we do.
Okay.
One hand up keeps going away. We're checking on it. It was, someone had their hand up, and it came down, and so we just want to make sure that...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your...
We'll give them just a moment here.
Yeah, thank you.
Is their hand, did it come back up or no?
You know what? They did not come back up, so we'll just move on. We have no other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to item number 13A, which is the COVID-19 update. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, this time, we're going to move on to our COVID-19 update. I do want to let you know that we are having a surge countywide. The county is currently in the medium COVID level, as defined by the CDC, based on elevated rate of people being infected by the virus. So if LA County's rate of daily COVID-positive patients being admitted to area hospitals tops 10 per 100,000 residents, then it will enter the high category. So as of today, that rate is at 8.8 per 100,000 residents. But the county officials, they anticipate that LA County will enter the high COVID level, which again is defined as 10 per 100,000 households. So if the county remains in that high category for two consecutive weeks, a mandatory indoor mask wearing will then be imposed. So on Tuesday, the county, countywide, reported 5,170 new COVID-19 infections, along with 14 new deaths. As far as the City of Gardena is concerned, our numbers are, the total case counting in the City of Gardena is 18,392. That is up 480 since the last meeting, two weeks ago. Death count remains at 270, which is good. For our vaccination rate, for children 5 to 11, we are at 34%. Ages 12 and above is at 88.9%. Youth 12 to 17 is at 81.8%, and then seniors, 65 and above is at 95, over 95%. We do still have our testing center at Raleigh Park, and as of today, a total of residents tested is 7,012. That is an additional 157 tests since the last council meeting. Madam Mayor, so that's my COVID-19 report.
Okay, does any member of the council have any questions in regards to this here? Okay, well, the only question I have, Mr. City Manager, I know this number here has been kind of what's been, what's going to determine whether or not we go back in person or not. So based on the information you've given us, we should know something a little bit more concrete probably by next Tuesday, but we probably won't get an official report until our city council meeting. Is that correct?
Right, so what, the numbers that you're seeing right now does not include, probably does not include the 4th of July...
Right.
Exposures.
exposures. Um, so we'll probably know something uh by uh twenty ninth of July, just to be on a on the safe side. Uh, and then we'll take it from there. If we are in a, yeah, obviously, if it's if it's indoor masks is um mandated, then we'd have to make a decision whether or not to to go back to in person, having to wear a mask the whole time.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess that's the number we're waiting for then. So, all right, uh thank you. Are there any more questions or comments as relates to this?
I do have a question.
Hold on a sec. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. My bad. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. City Manager, do uh do we have a timeline or a approximate date that we're looking to go back into person?
So, Councilmember Love, um a good question. Uh, we have been monitoring the numbers. Uh, we wanted to get ready as far as getting back uh to in-person meetings. And, you know, we were waiting for uh the fourth of fourth of July uh infection uh exposure uh results. Uh, so I said, like I said, it's it's about July twenty nine that we would know uh if that number has gone up. And obviously, the city council will have to decide whether or not if if we do go back, go back to the high level. Um, then do you want to go back into in person or only to wear a mask? Uh, so at this point, it's a wait and see. We're ready to go. Um, you know, we have some updates that we need to do at the the council chambers. Um, you know, we're looking at uh different things to mitigate exposure of COVID nineteen, uh certain things like, uh, you know, um uh some air purification uh devices, uh things of that nature. Uh, but we, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that uh we're comfortable with the numbers before we even go there.
Okay, that that makes sense. Um, and if we do go back into in person, will we be able to continue to do Zoom for those constituents and members of the community that cannot attend in person?
So the model that we're adopting is a either is in person or it's a Zoom meeting. We're not uh looking into a hybrid program uh simply because it's it's um the the technology to get there, um it's 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 we're not there. A- as it is, our council chamber, uh, we have very outdated uh equipment. We're currently in a process of uh uh doing an RFP to update all of the video, audio, streaming, uh channel twenty-two, recording, all that takes time. Uh, all that takes, uh, we do have the funds for that. It's not cheap. Uh, but it takes time. Time is is the factor here and that we we simply don't have the resources to to simply update the the council chambers. I mean, you you if you do, you give an example, if you do a hybrid uh Zoom and in person, there's just too much uh feedback, too much echo, and it's just, it's not conducive to a a good meeting. And so we we've decided that we're going to go, if we do go back into in person, um we'll just do that. We can't do the hybrid model.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments? No. Okay. Um, next, we're going to move on to council directors at this time. Does any member of the council have any directors? Okay, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh I was wondering if we could get some information from Spectrum in regards to our PEG channel and what we can do to add content to that channel, not like our own uh TV show or anything like that, but just to see what our agreement is and what we can do to add more content. And that's all. I just wanted to get some feedback on that. Bring it a second.
I'll second that.
All right, and that was it.
Any other directors at this time?
Yes, uh Mayor Serta, I would like to um give my first directive and that is to uh Mr. City Manager, um I would like for um you to take into the council members getting a cell phone. Um, I have enough people that call my cell phone already and I would really like to separate the city business from all the other businesses that I have. And so if we can um if we can do something about that, I would really appreciate that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Uh, since yeah, uh there is a second for that. So as I understand it, the directive is for this city to bring an agenda forward to modify and amend the city council policy relating to cell phones. Because currently, city council and mayor do not receive a cell phone itself or a stipend. So the directive is to bring forward an agenda to modify the 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 city council uh policy, correct? Is that is that what I?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make an amendment to that as well. I want to also take into account that we also have thousand dollar iPads, so um we have iPads and then now we're going to have cell phones as far as what all this expense is going to be for each council member now to have this, some type of communication device. So, I mean, all this, I guess, needs to be in discussion as well because it's one thing for us to have these thousand dollar iPads, but now we're also adding in cellphone as well as a communication device, so.
Well.
I I second it because I I uh when I first got on the city council, I was told that we couldn't have we couldn't have cell phones because of budgeted issues. And so that's why I just needed uh some, that's why I was I was just wondering about it. Because I I thought we did get them, then I found out we didn't get them, so. But I find out that there is a policy that says we don't get them, so we just uh that was it.
And we have to give the residents that don't have access to emails or not um able to email um such as our seniors, the ability to reach us uh when needed. And so um what I don't want is the community to call on other business lines to discuss city issues. And so that's my purpose of separating city business from other businesses. That's my purpose of the request. So, Mr. City Manager, uh if you understand that directive, I really appreciate that.
I have I have a directive for that. Um. The.
Can it be on?
Item will be placed on the agenda for the council to discuss and take a vote on whether or not the council members um are to have city issued cell phones and then the agenda item will um staff will provide what the budgeted amount or what the cost would be as part of the staff report for the council to consider.
Can can it can it be written if if uh council member so so requested? Because I don't, everybody might not want a cellphone, but.
So when when the items, because we're getting into the discussion on an item that's not agendized, we can we can bring it forward. Um, you guys can decide on what you want the policy to be. Um, you know, at that time, you can uh, you know, give us direction on what exactly you want the policy to be, if that's what you guys decide to vote on. And then, you know, we would go back, finish up the item and then bring it back um as however you guys decided. But right now, we're getting into discussion on something that's not agendized. So we have the directive. We'll, you know, staff will prepare the the item with the proposed potential cost would be um a potential policy. And then you guys decide if that's something you guys want. You want an amended version or a different version or or not at all. So that will be on a future discussion.
All right. Thank you, the city attorney Vasquez. Keep us on track.
Thank you.
Any more directors at this time? Okay, so um there's a new policy that we uh have that um the city um clerk would need to uh repeat. I'm sorry, not repeat, but go over what all the current directives were so that it's properly put in record. So um, Madam City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, I don't know which one.
Um, I can take it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just uh, we have two directives. The first one uh by Councilmember Henderson and I did not get who the second one was. I did not hear it. Who seconded it?
Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyway, uh, request to get more information from Spectrum and what we can do to add content to see and to see what our agreement is with Spectrum is what I thought.
That's correct.
Yeah, we did. And is there a clarification on that for me or is that sufficient? Okay.
That is um uh, City Clerk Semenza, that is uh relating to PEG um PEG programming, the public education and government.
PEG, thank you very much. Okay, um our second directive by Council, Councilmember uh Love to City Manager and second by Councilmember Francis uh regarding cellphone, cell phones for council members. Um, this will be agendized to uh modify possibly city council policy regarding cell phones. And it will be placed on the agenda uh and further, you know, uh details given to them and they will take a vote per our city attorney. Is that sufficient? Second. Is there any clarification, further clarification, or is this okay?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. That that concludes our uh directives.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, uh, Mr. City Manager, we have our City Manager remarks regarding our previous directives.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Sheriff, members of the city council, I have uh one, two, three memos that I uh sent to city council. First one is the memo uh regarding the digital message boards in our parks. Um, that is dated uh July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the second memo is um the drought-related measures update, uh again dated July fifth, twenty twenty-two. And last but not least, uh the memo on legislative advocacy update. Uh, this is highlighting the newest earmarks that the city of Gardena has received recently. Uh, that's about four million dollars for digital equity for all, uh two million dollars for the revitalization of Gardena Boulevard and one million in federal earmark for Rosecrans uh for the Rosecrans Community Center. Special thank you to um uh State Senator uh Stephen Bradford and Assembly Member uh Almar Succi for the six million and to Congresswoman Maxine Waters for the one million in federal earmark. I believe at this time, we would going to be seeing a video uh from the rec and human services. All right, thank you very much. Uh, great event. Uh, this time, I just want to uh give a sincere uh thank you to uh Councilmember Art Cascanian for five years of exemplary service. Also, thank you to uh former city treasurer Ingrid Tsukiyama. And congratulations to uh Mayor Serta, uh Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka and Councilmember, Councilmember Love for um uh being elected to the city council. Also, congratulations to City uh City Clerk Semenza and uh City Treasurer Motto. Last but not least, I want to greet uh our city attorney Carmen Vasquez. A happy birthday today. I believe she turned twenty-two. And our admin service director Ray Demon, uh which is tomorrow. So happy birthday. Mayor Serta, uh that ends my uh CM update.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that being said, we're going to move on to uh council remarks. We're going to begin tonight with Councilmember Francis.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, first of all, um I'd like to um speak, say, say a few words to the family of Jane Hall. I'm sure we're going to talk about it later on, but I'm just glad I had opportunity to meet her. Uh, Ms. Hall was joy personified. She was an active participant at our council meetings and we always depend on her for our her thoughtful commentary during our our meetings. And she will be missed and I just want to say rest in peace, Ms. Hall. And then to the honorable Councilmember Art Cascanian, I want you to know there's been a pleasure to serve with you on the city council and I wish you all the best in the future. And as we say, when one door closes, another door opens. So we'll be seeing you. Also want to uh congratulate and well congratulate and welcome uh Councilmember Wanda Love and also say congratulations to Guy Mata, Minus Semenza and uh Madam Mayor and Rodney Tanaka and Madam Mayor Tasha Serta on your reelection. So uh congratulations. Now I look forward to uh continue the great work that we we've got started. And since our last meeting, I attended the presentation of this new imaging machine that they have at the Gardena Memorial Hospital. This is a state-of-the-art one twenty-eight slice CT scanner that can actually uh look into your artery, which is uh amazing. And but and you don't need a prescription. I mean, you don't need to be a patient at Gardena Memorial to uh get get the scan if you need one. You just need a prescription from your doctor and they're open twenty-four hours. And as uh the head of the the X-ray department was telling us, you can just bring your prescription comment and they will, you can get a a screening. Also attended the state of C for Hawthorne, state of C address for Hawthorne, City of Hawthorne. And it was uh it's good to hear all the wonderful things that are happening next door with one of our neighbors and um I don't know, uh Mayor Serta, I think you started with something because he was taking a little jab at us, but you know, we did it first, so it was all all in good humor. And I enjoyed it. And I just um want to remind us that uh we're going to be the same. We just have to keep on doing what we've always done to keep ourselves and our families safe. And just keep in mind, remember, never forget, better days are coming. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, since our last, uh I attended the uh Torrance, City of Torrance's thirty-two ninety homeless center ribbon cutting. Uh, they have a uh a complex right next to their uh courthouse in the police department where they're housing, uh they have little houses, uh pallet houses. Um, and Supervisor Han was there to uh promote the ribbon cutting. It was a good event. Uh, attended the uh LATA grant briefing um meeting uh talking about broadband and some other uh Wi-Fi issues. Uh, with uh Councilwoman uh Francis, uh went to Memorial Hospital to see their new CT scanner and it is the love of their their hospital. They were just so excited about this new piece of equipment because they have they have nothing new there and they could use some other stuff, but uh this is a great addition to their hospital. Uh, attended the COGS homeless task force, uh which I'm uh chair. Uh, attended Dodger Day. Uh, that was a great event. It was a lot of fun. And it was nice to see uh Councilmember Cascanian throughout the first pitch, sorta kinda, right, Councilmember Anderson? Uh, attended the COGS during uh committee meeting. Um, also attended the Hawthorne State of the uh City and they're celebrating their hundredth anniversary. And um it it was really a great event. Uh, Stephanie Santina and I looked at each other and we said, this looks so familiar. It was like deja vu. I think it was our program uh with Hawthorne's uh logos. But it was a great event. Congratulations to uh City of Hawthorne. I also um want to speak a little bit about Ms. Hall. Jenny Hall was, when I was a young policeman, was one of my uh big supporters. Uh, she was on rent comedian, rent mediation. Uh, she would always come to me with questions and 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 uh sometimes complaints. But uh she was a straight shooter. She she told it like it was. Uh, and uh she will definitely be missed by the city of Gardena. And Art, uh thank you for your five years of uh uh coming along on council. Uh, we made some great strides in the city in the five years. Uh, we appreciate your dedication, uh, you know, the willingness to give out of your own. own pocket, um, you know, your time, and to always try to make the events, uh, that were in the city. So good luck, uh, and I definitely will be seeing you, uh, around town. And that is my important memory.
Okay. Okay, next up is Councilmember Love.
Thank you, Mayor Serta. Um, my remarks are very short. I just want to again thank the community, uh, for their support, but I also want to, um, let everyone on the council know that I am looking forward to the next four years of working with you all. I am excited about the, uh, work that we have ahead of us, and I know it's going to be challenging, but I believe that we can work together and get it done. So, uh, that ends my report. I mean, I'm sorry, that ends my comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and next up for myself, uh, since the last council meeting, um, I, um, I attended late, but, uh, I did stop by there, the Gardena Memorial Open House for the CT slicer, got the opportunity to meet the CFO, uh, later on, uh, and I presented them with a cert, um, a certificate congratulating them on their grand opening. But you guys had already been there, and, uh, Councilmember, uh, Francis and, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, for the actual event there. So thank you guys for, for being there, um, in my absence while I was still at work. But, um, very excited for Gardena Hospital, glad that they were able to, uh, get that machine there. Um, also, on the next day, I attended the memorial service for the two, um, officers from the City of Belmonte that were killed. Um, that was Sergeant Michael, um, Paredes and Officer Joseph Santana. And, uh, I was also, uh, joined by members of our Gardena, um, well, I should say, I joined the Gardena, uh, members of our Gardena Police Department, as well as our honor guard were out there. And, um, you know, it, it was a sad occasion, but it was a beautiful sight to see how many officers were there just honoring the life of, uh, these two officers who just paid the ultimate sacrifice. Um, and, um, I was very proud to, uh, just to be there from, um, the City of Gardena, uh, during that time. And also, um, I attended the, uh, Fourth of July, uh, celebration at Raleigh Park, and, um, this was probably one of the best shows that we have had, probably, uh, I know the chief said it as well, probably in over 20 years now. Uh, they did an amazing job out there. I know the crowd was pleased with it. I was very pleased, but it was, we definitely got our money's worth. And, uh, so, uh, great job, uh, with this company here, and, uh, hopefully we continue having great shows like that moving forward. Um, I also attended Dodger Day, uh, we had a great time. Uh, I want to commend my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Cascanian, Councilmember Henderson, uh, throwing the first pitch, and, uh, you guys did some really quick thinking out there. I was really proud of that. Uh, I, let's just say they missed, but then they recovered really quickly, and, uh, good thinking. I don't think I've ever, ever seen anybody do that with the first pitch, so it worked out good. So, uh, we're proud here in the City of Gardena to, uh, both my colleagues for that. Um, also on Sunday, I attended the installation, um, um, of the new officers for the, uh, Southern California, uh, INCA's Lions Club for the 2022, 2023, uh, for their new members, uh, at El Pola INCA in Rolling Hills. And, uh, they're actually a Gardena chapter, but they had their event in the Rolling Hills at Pola INCA, and it was a wonderful event. And then earlier today, I attended, uh, a realtors event, uh, that was a council of women's forum, uh, that was held in Redondo Beach, and a wonderful event where we had the opportunity to hear the different experiences from different women realtors, um, how they got into the business, what some of the struggles were, and, uh, just some encouragement to others who were in the real estate industry on, um, you know, getting into this and, uh, just, you know, staying fresh, staying consistent with the job. And I was even more excited that my sister was on the panel because she is the president of, I can't remember which real estate board.
Southwest.
Southwest Real Estate, thank you, Mina. Southwest Real Estate Board, and, uh, she was one of the panel members, uh, there as well. So, uh, it was a great, uh, great event to be able to attend. And, um, I too, um, going to miss Jane Hall. She was a very, very dear friend of mine. I know I've known her for over 20 years. I don't even know exactly how many, but I know it's been over 20 years. Uh, when I first got involved, um, in Gardena, uh, I met her here at the city council chambers. We were both sitting here in the waiting area, uh, waiting to have a meeting with the city council member at the time, and we had been friends ever since. And she would always send these wonderful letters that she would write, either in a, in a marker or a crayon. And, uh, she didn't believe in typewriters or anything like that. She just wrote it from hand, but, uh, we'll definitely miss her. Uh, we'll miss seeing her at the, uh, Council on the Law and Ice Cream Social. She would love to get out and dance. She loved jazz, and, uh, she always loved to talk about it. So, um, I'm happy, though, that we did get a chance to see her during COVID. She was so happy when Parks and Rec, uh, when we, we drove around and brought coffee and water and, um, packs of tissue to her. She was so happy with that. And, uh, she loved this city. She loved, um, all the things that we do in this city, and she was a very, very proud resident. So we're definitely gonna, uh, miss seeing her at our different events. And, uh, and all the years, um, I started with Rent Mediation Board, she started at the same time, and she continued, uh, all the way up till now, being a Rent Mediation Board, uh, number over 20 something years. And she was a strong advocate for, uh, mobile home parks. Um, knew, I think it's called the C R, CRSs or something. It's kind of like the Bible of mobile home parks. She knew it all. She read it twice over, and she would school us on all of that. So definitely going to miss her. Um, and, uh, once again, I just want to say, uh, I said it earlier, but, uh, we're definitely going to miss Councilmember, uh, Cascanian, uh, amazing council member, and I, like I said, it was my pleasure just, uh, serving on this council with him. He did an amazing job, so he'll be a hard act to follow. Uh, lastly, just want to send a special happy birthday to Carmen, even though it seems like she doesn't want to recognize it, you're going to get it from us anyway. So happy birthday to you. And, uh, also pretty happy birthday to Ray Beeman. I'm sure we'll see you tomorrow, but, uh, happy birthday to you as well. And with that, that ends my report, and next up is Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to say also, uh, thank you to Councilman Art Cascanian for his years of service, his dedication and his passion. I'm going to miss our dialogue on the push and pull in regards to our finances and our budget and everything, but I, I loved our conversations about that and trying to push this thing forward. So I appreciate that. Uh, as Councilwoman Francis say, you know, one door closes, another door opens. Luckily, he's still a jewel in our community, so he won't be hard to find. Uh, set to his wife, very supportive, so I wish them the best. I want to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, you Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, I want to also welcome Councilwoman Love. Oh, also congratulate you, City Clerk Minus Semenza, because you guys are all going to be here for a while, but I want to congratulate you, Councilmember Love, and our new treasurer, Guy Motto, in regards to your, your new roles. I'm looking forward to what we're going to do as a body, as a team, as a group, because again, our theme has always been moving Gardena forward, so we wanted to keep that going. Uh, I want to wish happy birthday to Madam City Attorney. You know, you got a special place in my heart and everything, so hopefully I get invited to the, uh, the celebration. Oh, she hates this. She hates this. Uh, I also have some comments about Jane Hall as well. I served like Madam Mayor on the Rent Mediation Board with her as well, and I would give her rides home, and we would have these jazz debates, and it was just really great. And, and she was definitely, she sticked to her guns o- on a lot of stuff. But I want to say one thing that she shared is that she was very critical of our administration's past and present and everything, but she was very supportive of the things that we would do. But she'd give it to you what was on her mind, and, and that actually kind of, I think, helps us all be, uh, better, uh, representatives and leaders in our community. So to, uh, Jane's family, we want to pray for them and keep them in our hearts and, and keep her memory close. Uh, since our last meeting, I attended the Hawthorne State of the City. Uh, I'm going to, uh, keep my comments reserved for that. They took some shots at us, but that's because we're leading, so usually when you're leading, uh, that's what folks want to do. Uh, but it was a great event. Uh, as Mayor Pro Tim said, it was kind of deja vu and everything, but I will say, Madam Mayor, we do things from the dome, we don't need a teleprompter. So. So I wanted to, uh, say that, but it was great, and it's good to see our South Bay cities out, supporting one another. We should always support our neighbors, because again, it goes beyond mutual aid, but again, as, uh, Mayor Alex said about just sharing thoughts and understandings about what's going on. We're 16 cities in the South Bay, but issues don't know street signs, and so therefore we all got to collectively work together. Uh, also participated in a, a panel opportunity to talk about the, uh, merits and drawbacks of public-private partnerships. Uh, we want to still work with the business industry to make sure that there is some collaboration as we move forward, but understand, in a partnership, it's a 50/50 discussion in regards to what we're trying to achieve as a, as a collaborative. I attended the, uh, South Bay COG broadband, uh, initiative and everything. It was great in regards to what our COG is doing, so thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for being our representative there. Uh, I also talked to the chair. Uh, I think Gardena is ready for our next phase of what we're going to do with our broadband stuff, so it was good that we received this funding as we can kind of make our broadband equity initiatives a reality. Uh, I attended my SCAG meetings as well. Uh, the state is giving some more time for municipalities to address their arena zoning issues and everything, so that's a good thing. And Dodger Day was outstanding. It was a great day. That was my granddaughter's first Dodger game, her first Dodger win. She thinks now we supposed to go to baseball games every day. So every time, she's like, baseball, baseball. I'm like, no, we got to pick another time, but she really had a good time, so, uh, my heart was, uh, warmed for her to have her first memory of baseball with myself and her grandmother. Uh, all my sons came, uh, other significant others, their friends. My daughter was ill, so she couldn't make it, so it was a great family timeout. Our community was out, it just was a wonderful event. So I was really elated to be able to participate in that. And to help Councilman Cascanian get that ball across the plate, uh, we messed it up the first time, but we took care of it the second time, got a quick redo. Uh, again, Gardena is a city of love, we work hard, we play hard, we stick together, we make sure our community is out on top. As Mayor Pro Tim says, we are the jewel of the South Bay. We're one of one out of 16, and we got to keep just kind of working towards that. We're a small, mighty city, and we just got to keep going. Madam Mayor, so ends my report.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know why, but I forgot to mention that, yeah, I was at the Hawthorne State of the City. And, uh, just for clarification, because I know a lot of people are probably wondering this, from my State of the City as well as the one we're at the other day, Mayor Alex Vargas and I go way back, so, um, it's all done at fun and love, the jabs we take at each other, and I knew walking into that State of the City that we were going to get it, but, uh, at the end of the day, um, I was flattered at the fact that they wanted to do, um, their State of the City the way we, uh, have done ours. And, uh, I think the success of that just goes to our staff to show what an amazing job you guys did, because it was, it was flattering to see, uh, another city pick up on that idea and want to, uh, do one the way we did. So, um, I was very pleased with that, so. Um, last thing here, announcements, uh, believe, one quick announcement, um, want to remind everybody, this coming Saturday is Ice Cream with a Cop. Um, it's going to be at two parks, it's going to be at Raleigh Park as well as, uh, Johnson Park. I believe there are a couple of different times on there, from like, uh, one of them like 11 to 12:30 or something, the second park from 1 to 3. Uh, but we do have flyers on social media, I don't have a flyer in front of me, but, uh, they give that information there, so, uh, definitely want to come out and, um, let our residents enjoy that event. And so next, we're going to move on to remembrances. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Jane Hall, who is 93 years of age, a beloved Rent Mediation Board member, tenant representative since 2002, and a longtime Gardena resident. So at this time, we're going to go to adjournment. The Gardena City Council will adjourn to the closed session portion of the City Council meeting at 7:00 PM, followed by the regular City Council meeting at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, July 26, 2022. We are adjourned.
Night, y'all.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Go Dodgers.